Please rise and join me in the prayer. Today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us in everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Mayor Chow, Councilor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Councilor, Vice Chair Getchea.
Yes.
Councilor Janess.
Here.
Councilor Leahy.
Here.
Kilmartin, beloved mother, grandmother, great-grandmother, sister, aunt. Louise A. Moynihan Kilmartin, 91, of Lowell, Massachusetts. Passed away peacefully surrounded by her loving family on Thursday, November 7th. She was the beloved wife of the late George P. Kilmartin, retired Lowell Police Department. Born in Lowell on July 5th, 1932, the daughter of the late John J. and Frances J. Moynihan. She attended the Lowell Schools, graduate of Lowell High School, class of 1949. Louise was a lifelong communicant of St. Margaret of Scotland Church, where she was also an active member of the St. Margaret Blessed Virgin Sedality, former member of the Middle Sex Women's Club and League of Catholic Women. Prior to her retirement, Louise worked, loved her work as a secretary at the Fred Abacy Adult Education Center in Lowell for over 20 years. She was a proud resident of the Highlands for most of her life. Her greatest joy was spending time with her family. She is survived by her daughter Catherine A. Meehan, retired reading specialist, and her husband Thomas E. of Drakot. Her four sons, John F. Kilmartin of Waltham, Mass., Robert J. Kilmartin, retired Colonel of the United States Marine Corps, and his wife Kathleen of Barnstable; William J. Kilmartin, retired postal employee of Tinsborough, Mass.; and Michael D. Kilmartin, Lowell Police Department, and his wife Patricia of Chelmsford. She had eight grandchildren, and she will be sadly missed. Thank you.
Councilor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in darkened chambers for Michael P. Downs, Sr., who passed away on October 13th, age 77, at LGH after a three-month bout with cancer. Michael was survived by his wife, Chandra Parry; his three sons, Michael Jr. of Lowell, Matthew and Kimberly Downs of Switzerland; and Nicholas Downs and Anita Burns of Mount Pleasant, South Carolina; as well as his brother, Dr. Joseph M. Downs, Jr. of Lowell; Sister Frances, and Robert Moore of Tewksbury; and many other loved ones. He was predeceased by his first wife, Donna Dunphy Downs, in 2005. Mike was born on March 25th, 1946, the son of the late mayor, Joseph M. Downs, Sr., and Frances Anna Doddlin Downs. He grew up in Centerville, The Acre, and Belvedere Sections of Lowell, graduating from Lowell High in 1963. He went on to earn his Associate's Degree from Chamberlain Junior College in Boston, his Bachelor of Science from Northeastern University in 1972, and an MBA from Riviera College in 1977. Mike was truly a man of Lowell. He gave back to the city in many ways, including coaching the Lowell Braves Little League Team at the age of only 17. He went on to coach youth basketball and soccer for many years, and he was on the board of the MRT, as well as the Nesmith House, and involved with the Greater Lowell and Merrimack Valley Chambers of Commerce. Mike joined Wang Labs in 1969 as a production planner and rose to the role of Senior VP of Worldwide Manufacturing. He was the highest-ranking native Lowellian employed by the company. Mike was truly a fixture of this city, and will be missed by many. May he rest in peace.
Seeing no other, please dim the lights. Two mayors' business. Motion to accept and place on file by Councilor Scott, seconded by Councilor Yem. Three, City Clerk. 3.1 Minutes of Transportation Subcommittee Meeting, October 24th. City Council Meeting, October 24th. Special Events Subcommittee Meeting, November 2nd, for acceptance. Motion to accept and place on file by Councilor Janess, seconded by Councilor Leahy. 3.2 Vote. Cancel Council Meeting, 11/28/23. Waive full reading and second reading by title. Vote to cancel Council Meeting on November 28th, 2023. Motion to accept. Council Robinson, seconded by Councilor Rook. Roll call.
Mayor Chow, Councilor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Councilor Getchea.
No.
Councilor Janess.
Yes.
Councilor Leahy.
Yes.
Councilor Mercia.
Yes.
Councilor Noon.
No.
Council Robinson.
Yes.
Council Rook.
Yes.
Council Scott.
Yes.
Council Yem.
Yes.
Nine yeas, one, two, three. Nine yeas, motion passes. Four, General Public Hearing. We'll wait till 7:00. Number five, City Council Motions. 5.1, Councilor Noon. Request City Manager contact the LRTA requesting a report to specifically detail the expected increases for the LRTA of state funds and the intended use of these funds. Seconded by Councilor Mercia, Councilor Noon.
I share this with the registered speaker on this. Jonathan Grossman.
Good evening. Jonathan Grossman, 83, Varnum Ave. And I want to thank Councilor Noon for filing this motion. As I volunteer with our local climate justice group, 350 Mass., and we're concerned about public transit, as many people are. Over the last year, the LRTA has received additional funding. The RTAs generally got a $56 million increase in operating dollars from the FY24 state budget, and there were some smaller amounts in addition for fare-free pilot programs and some grant opportunities. In addition, the Lowell RTA was given a federal grant of about $7.5 million for the funding of low emission and no emission vehicles, as well as for workforce development. So, given that Lowell's public transit system could stand some improvement, I don't think I'm going too far out on a limb there, and that we have a pressing need to plan for a sustainable future, which includes reducing pollution and greenhouse gas emissions through electrification, we would like to know, and I'm thinking a lot of folks would like to know, what the LRTA is going to do with the money. And so, I hope that the council will support a motion to find out, and questions that we'd like to see answered include what service improvements are anticipated, what type of new vehicles will be purchased, will they be fully electric or hybrid, and will they be no or low emissions? When can we expect to see them? What about, are there any planned facility modifications? What are the LRTA's plans with respect to workforce development, especially in preparation for the fleet electrification that will come sooner or later? And just generally, how are they going to use the money to improve service and electrify the fleet? So, we support the motion. I hope the council passes it, and we'll ask the LRTA these questions for the public's benefit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grossman. Turn it over to the council. It's Councilor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. So, my understanding is that the managers is on the board of the LRTA. There seem to be a lot of money, so it's not wrong for us, the public, and this council to want to know what the plan is in terms of the public transit. We need that, and also public transit, one where we address the issue of climate change and all the like. The speaker spoke eloquently on the subject matters, so report may be detailing, you know, what they're going to do with those money, and maybe short-term and long-term plan for those money. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Noon. Motion to accept and place on file. 5.2, Councilor Noon. Request City Manager have proper department add Cedar Lane to the crack ceiling list and repair a manhole. Seconded by Councilor Rook.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'm going to withdraw the motion, given that the assistant city managers have took care of that matters, you know, as soon as I brought it to him. He took care of half of these matters already. The residents are very happy. The remaining of the issues, I'll let the assistant city manager expand on that. Thank you.
Assistant City Manager, machado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so the Waste Management went out Monday and repaired the manhole, and Cedar Lane is added to the crack sale list, and neighbors did go out and say thank you to Waste Management when they were repairing the manhole.
Thank you, Councilor Noon. 5.3, Council Robinson. Request City Manager have proper department provide possibilities to improve lighting around Eagle Park.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Noon. Council Robinson.
Thank you. This is the area of West 6th, the front side of Eagle Park, right at that corner there of Hampshire and West 6th. It's a bus stop, and it is very dark, that location, so any help would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Motion to accept. 5.4, Council Robinson. Request City Manager have the proper department explore making a four-way stop at 10th and Beacon Street. Seconded by Councilor Drinkwater. Council Robinson.
Thank you. And it doesn't even have to, we're not just looking for a four-way stop. Any kind of mitigation effort would be greatly appreciated. There was just an accident over there, and one of the constituents that was involved in the accident is the one that brought this to my attention, so thank you.
Motion to accept. 5.5, Council Robinson. Request City Manager have the proper department explore the feasibility of converting Puffa Ave into a one-way.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Noon. Council Robinson.
Again, constituent concern pretty much speaks for itself. Thank you.
If I may add to it.
Councilor Noon.
Mr. Vice Mayor, thank you. So, also while we add it, and this is along the line of engineering and traffic, I don't remember when the issues of the speed limit, 25 mile per hour, was recent update, but if we add to it as well that which street are going to be excluded from this 25 mile per hour that we council put forth in the term of ordinance and stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Noon. Motion to accept. 5.6, Council Robinson. Request City Manager work with the co-op team, the LP, and other relevant stakeholders to invite unhoused representatives to be part of discussions regarding an ordinance relating to unlawful camping on public property.
Mr. Vice Mayor, can I bundle that with 5.7? So, 5.6 and 5.7 would be bundled.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Rook. 5.7, Council Rook, Council Scott, Council Robinson. Request City Manager have the proper department consider expediently adopting an ordinance relating to unlawful camping on public property, similar to the city of Boston. Council Robinson.
Yeah, some registered speakers on both items. Ron Peachtree.
Just to be clear, there's a three-minute limit now. It changed last time.
Yeah, I understand. Do I have six because it's two different items I'm talking about, or is it three because we've combined the two of them?
I'd give them three, but.
I'll be brief. I'm completely in favor of the idea that we involve all of the stakeholders. I want to raise a cautionary thing about that, and that is that the stakeholders for the unhoused are going to include people who might have outstanding warrants for vagrancy, and they might be very scared to come forward and represent their group, because if they walk into an official meeting, they're going to be worried about the Lowell Police arresting them. I'm not talking about drug dealers. I'm not talking about people who are guilty of felonies. I'm just talking about people who are members of that group, who because of vagrancy and other issues, might be very hesitant to step forward and represent them. We might want to think about a way to protect them while they're speaking. That's that topic. The other topic is, as long as we're following with Boston's idea, and the two critical things that I think are important there are, Boston explicitly states, if they have no housing available, no beds available, then camping is allowed until such time as we do have beds. They have standards in place. They have methods for making sure that things are going to stay clean and safe, but beds have to be available if we can't give them, if they can't camp. And then also people's private property. The sweeps last year, one of the unfortunate things that took place is people lost birth certificates and driver's licenses and other kinds of things during the sweeps that, quite frankly, exposed the city to a certain amount of legal trouble that I'd like us to not have. But it's also just, it doesn't help. These people can't get services if they lose what little paperwork they have. So, Boston's been very careful about saying that anyone who's caught up in these sweeps or the camping issues, their property will be protected. I think it's important that we do that. The ordinance that we're talking about has been unclear. It says based on Boston, but doesn't say that we will follow exactly. So, these two parts of that, I think, are very important that we stick to. There. I hope I did that in under three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Peachtree.
Dee Halsak.
So, I'm here to speak on the two motions, too, and I thank Councilor Robinson for bringing the 5.6, because whenever you're making decisions about people's lives, they need to be included in the decision. It's a good rule of operating to have nothing about them without them. And about the ordinance itself, I have the same concerns as Mr. Peachtree, that the Boston ordinance specifically covers cases when there are no shelter spaces available, and we know there are not enough spaces in Lowell right now. I would rather you be doing something about that first before you start saying camping is illegal, because people have no place to go. And he said most of what I would have said, so I'm not going to take more time, because you've got four people coming.
Thank you, Mrs. Halsak.
Marissa Dupont.
Hi, everyone. I'm Marissa Dupont. I live at 46 Carlisle Street. Well, I am happy about the motion to work with the unhoused folks on future initiatives. It is disappointing to be speaking on exactly the same topic as just under a year ago. I'm not sure what will convince you that the unhoused population are people, and our neighbors, and our siblings, and that playing musical chairs with them month after month will not solve the situation. It appears that many of you think that if they move the unhoused people around enough, they'll just decide to move somewhere else. This is not rational. These people want to stay here because this is where they've been able to survive. This is where they can scrape together some money for food by standing out in front of McDonald's. This is where others like them can band together and help each other. This is where they can find services most of the time. A few of you seem to think that we have a multitude of services for these folks that could easily handle all of them. Then why is LTLC always full with a line out the door every night? Why are our nonprofits who work in addiction services understaffed? We might have more beds than other cities, but it is far from enough. I've said this when I've spoken here before, but motions like this are a slippery slope to making homelessness illegal, which is illegal. It started with downtown, and just like we thought, now it's spreading to all public property. These people don't own properties, so where are they supposed to sleep? The City Hall steps? Someone's yard? You look at these human beings as a problem instead of as those needing compassion and assistance. You wouldn't toss aside your Vietnam Vet uncle with PTSD, or your niece who suffers from addiction, so why are you treating these people like that? You cannot disappear them. They live here whether you want to think that or not. They should be cared for. And if there aren't enough services or beds, you need to find a way to create more by possibly requesting funding from the state or the federal government, or applying for grants. What exactly is this motion designed to accomplish? As many of you have said, we are not Boston. Boston has a lot more room than we do, and a lot more beds and services, and what they did there was wrong. This is not something to emulate. We can help our unhoused people. We can do better than musical chairs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dupont.
Giovanna Mason.
I want to thank, I want to thank the speakers who went already, because you guys have said some great things. My name is Giovanna Mason. I'm a lifelong resident of Lowell. I'm here to comment on motions 5.6 and 5.7 regarding the ordinance relating to unlawful camping on public property. These motions criminalize vulnerable community members who are simply trying to survive. Temperatures are already freezing, and winter is here in Lowell. When are you going to share the winter protocol for houseless individuals and families in our community? What additional beds will the city make available to supplement LTLC? Which warming centers will be available, and will there be centers open after 2:00 PM? And how will these community members be notified of this availability? How will they be able to access these resources? And I just simply implore the city to please shift their focus regarding this crisis. As city councilors, you must focus on how we can provide better care and resources that empower our unhoused community members with multiple alternative housing choices and keep them safe and healthy in these winter months and in the long term. Criminalizing houselessness fails to address the underlying causes. It fails to address the needs of our community members, and it further undermines and alienates the challenges of our most vulnerable neighbors. If and when you speak to unhoused folks, their needs should be your focus, not a focus on criminalizing vagrancy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Mason.
No more speakers.
The floor recognizes Councilor Robinson.
Thank you. Thank you to the speakers for coming out. Let's be clear on this. We continuously go in circles over this. This isn't about criminalizing homelessness at all. The reason people have been coming to Lowell, we see increased numbers. One, let's be honest, this is where it's been enabled. This is where the vagrancy has been allowed to thrive. This is where we saw firsthand over the summer months, encampments became breeding grounds for drug dealing, as well as all other illegal activities. But yet, some portray it as it's just people that fell in hard times. Within a week ago, we just had, I believe, a woman was struck in the head with a firearm in one of these encampments in an argument over crack cocaine or a bicycle. So, this doesn't sound to me like these are people that are just having a hard time, lost a job, came through the pandemic, and can't get back on their feet. Every time the city has gone out and worked with the unhoused community to clear an encampment that became illegal bed of activity, we've offered help. We've offered to transport their goods. After listening to concerns of the community, after the first one that we did, we adjusted. If you look at the numbers of how many people are actually willing to take help, then you would really understand that all of these pleas that we keep hearing, something's not adding up. This is where we, as a city, need to determine. Boston just passed this policy. We're at the end of the commuter rail. Guess where people are going to start coming and setting up camps? A place that's going to allow it, enable it, and defend it, as we're hearing tonight and we've heard in the past. It's funny, because we have advocates that work for organizations in the city, but yet when they cleared camps on the property of where they work, not bull is said. Same thing in the city of Boston, when this passed 9 to 3 a week ago. Not bull is said by any of the local advocates about that. We have 115,000 people in this city. We are offering and doing everything we possibly can, including offering social services, which even the advocates agree, that's why they're drawn to our city. But this isn't just local residents that we're dealing with. We're seeing influxes from surrounding communities, people getting dropped off because we are a social service mecca. And in the meantime, our neighborhoods are suffering. These encampments are popping up, and if they were just encampments where people were struggling, trying to get back on their feet, that's one thing. In my district, when we went in, we found, I believe, 40 stolen propane tanks from neighborhood houses, never mind the car breaks that have all been traced to these encampments. Enough is enough. I think we have an opportunity here to follow Boston's lead, and yes, we need to do it in the most humane way. We do need to offer alternative bed situations, which we've been doing right along, and people straight-up refuse. And so, all I hear is, you can't do this, this is not right, but yet there's nothing that is offered as a suggestion outside of, we need to offer a variety of pro. We've been offering a variety, and people are smacking that hand away repeatedly when we outstretch it, for whatever reason. And people have that right. You have that right to refuse services or help if that's what you choose. But we have been offering right along alternative methods to get people off of the street, out of encampments, and it's not about how many beds do you have today. We could have 100 beds sitting open, and you'd be lucky to find 10 people in an encampment that would take that help. And that's just the reality of it. Please don't listen to the spin. Listen to the professionals that are out there in the street when we go out and deal with these encampments on a daily basis. And when we're out walking on Summer Street and offering available programming and opportunities to get people off of these streets, and outright refused. So, it's these, the advocates that are out here saying that the city's not offering alternatives, it's a straight-out lie. And I'm sorry, but I think this council has a serious decision to make. We're at a crossroad. Boston is not tolerating this any longer. Are we going to allow it and open our arms to the influx of those that are going to relocate from Boston? Or are we going to take a stand and say, listen, we're going to continue to do everything we can to offer people a way out? And if they continue to choose, that's their decision to make. But for the 115,000 that aren't unhoused or aren't dealing with vagrancy and don't think this is okay, I think they have a voice at the table as well. Thank you.
Councilor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To follow that after, Council Robinson, but I agree with everything Council Robinson just said. I mean, there's a lot of people that have come here time and time again advocating for the homeless in the city, but there is a need for us to advocate for the residents, the rest of the residents in the city, the ones, the students at the STEM Academy and the teachers that have to go out and clear needles before they can go outside and have recess or run around in the fields, for the after-school programs, the sports groups that just can't even practice anymore at South Common because of the number of needles that are there. That's part of our role, is to advocate for them as well. The Boston ordinance, we are all well aware that you cannot remove homeless camps when there is not a place for them to go. It has been upheld in courts, and we're all very aware of that. This ordinance does not do that, the Boston ordinance. It says when they have a dry bed, you know, in the middle of the winter to go to, then you cannot be out camping on public property. It's that simple. And I definitely support this. I mean, the camps that we've seen, they've had fire hazards, violent incidences, there's been weapons, there's been a lot of issues. And I've said it before, if it was my child out in a camp in the middle of winter and there was an open bed, then yes, I want them pushed into that bed. Thank you.
Thank you, Sir Vice Mayor.
Council Rook.
Following my colleagues' comments, you know, and one thing that hasn't stayed before at council meetings, I know we have our health director and our homeless coordinator here as well, is that every time our co-op team and they go into an encampment, they ask every single time, who wants help? And the last time I think I asked that question, the answer was no one has ever accepted the assistance that's been offered to them. You know, when people are on the verge of homelessness and they contact nonprofits such as CTI, yes, they are helped right away, and they are given resources to maintain, you know, their home. But in this case here, as we talked about before, you know, you can't have it both ways where, you know, if there's a bed available, but you want to be able to do drugs, you want to be able to, you know, commit crime, and not to say everybody that's homeless does that, but our co-op team consistently goes into these encampments and asks all the time, do you want help? Do you want services? And I know they're here tonight, they want to come up and say someone has accepted before and detail the process of how it works, great, but as far as I know, that has not happened in the number of years that. But as far as I know, that has not happened in the number of years that this team has been put in place. And they are doing God's work and trying to help everybody that's involved. But, you know, we have to, you know, make a statement that it's illegal to do so, you can't be camping on public property. You know, to Council Robinson's point of the propane tanks, which was probably the most shocking thing that was discovered when they cleared out the First Street encampment, these are public safety hazards and serious issues. Thank you, Assistant Mayor.
Councilor Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I just want to thank the speaker who came up and speak on the issues, and I feel the compassion and I feel for the people who are unhoused. However, and I also thanks residents who reached out to me, asked me to vote against the motion 5.7. However, I also received concern, phone call from resident homeowners who pay taxes and who are suffering due to the fact that the unhoused homeless individuals intimidating their family, and then they don't feel safe at their own home. Also, the business owner, if you go to Cambodia Town right now, the unhoused population have really increased dramatically in the Cambodia Town to the point that the businesses are suffering. We—the city have just cleared a property at 6264 Brand Street, and Kim Donut breathed a sigh of relief, and all the patrons that go to the store now feel safe to go shop at the Kim Donut. So there is a balance, and the city do their part to support unhoused, providing services and providing a shelter. And if one needed, the city would work hard. The city has allocated certain funds already from this council request to help and provide some affordable bed for individuals who need one. So I will vote to support this motion. Thank you.
Councilor Drinkwater.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In following the discussion in the city of Boston around the ordinance that passed there a couple of weeks ago, and actually reading the ordinance that did pass, I have to say, I feel it was very thoughtfully and compassionately drafted. What it does is actually codify a process, one that this council has been discussing for well over the past year, and I know has been evolving in the way that the city does address encampments. And it would take that process that we've been discussing and actually put it into a city ordinance. So to take some of the compassionate approaches that we've stressed, we support, such as providing information about available shelter, about the storage of materials, about providing transportation to shelters with available beds, and making that a part of the process. And when there are no beds available, and also, at least the ordinance in the city of Boston sets a process for that, where certain conditions have to be maintained, where encampments are present to protect public health, public safety, and the safety of those residing in the encampment. So I really—I look at what's been done in the city of Boston, and I really think it's an ordinance that's been drafted to make sure that we're protecting public health, public safety, again, both for those who reside there and also for others as well, and making sure that though everyone involved is treated compassionately, provided access to services that will help them. So with that, again, I know we're not making law here tonight, we're deciding whether to move forward with the discussion, and I think there is a discussion that can be had about a good public policy for the city that can be done thoughtfully and compassionally. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. This is a very touchy, difficult subject, because I hear where the speakers are coming from, compassion. If this—and we as city councilors always try to find ways to make this city better, we say, there's a lot to like about Lowell, but then when you come into the city and you see people going to the bathroom because they're on drugs, and they have to go somewhere, so they're going in doorways, they're going in alleys, they're going in parks, and you don't want to bring your children to the park because then you'll see the needles, then you'll see more than what you've dealt and thought you were going to see. So we need suggestions. We don't need people to just come up and say, oh, it's a shame that you're doing thi— Come up to the podium and tell me what we can do, except have compassion. We do try to have compassion. Number one, if you want to see the needles disappear from the street, offer a needle exchange. You want a needle, bring in your old one. Maybe that's a suggestion. Maybe that'll lessen the burden of, you know, letting your kids go into a park and tripping over a needle that's going to stab them. I don't want your children stabbed, and I don't want my grandchildren either. Secondly, maybe we could put outhouses around the city so that they're not going in alleyways and everywhere else. Maybe we can do a little bit more to alleviate things that we take for granted when we see people that are out in the street and they need to go somewhere. There's things that we can do. I personally feel that this would be a dream with me if we had a building. Now, I hear, oh, let's get them into housing, oh, they need housing. There's a lot of people that need housing, people that are the working poor, that lost their apartment. I know a couple that is sleeping in the South Common. They don't drink, they don't smoke, they're not on drugs, they need housing. Through the efforts of the co-op team, they got this couple after quite a while, but they dug and dug and got him in Bishop Markham, and I'm thrilled. I see them every day. They came in with soaking blankets. They were going to throw them away, they needed more. We washed them. They were soaking wet. We told them, go into the closet that we have, get your clothes, and change in the bathroom. We do their wash, we do so many things to help the homeless. We do have compassion. But you can't expect a person that is on drugs or mentally ill to have an apartment. They can't take care of themselves. You want to put them in an apartment next to Mrs. so-and-so that's 80 years old? I don't think I want to do that. We need a facility, we need a building to put them in and have them monitored so that they can be given their medicine. And you'd be surprised that people that are mentally ill, if they're on their medication, you'd never know that they had a problem. But you need someone to monitor it. These are the things that we need. I don't hear anybody saying, let's take this building and transform it into a facility where we could hire people to watch them and monitor them and give them a facility to wash up and take a shower and change their clothes, and that's what we need. We don't want to get them an apartment for what? Throw them off, get them off the street and throw them there? There's things that we can do, but I don't see it being done. So these are the things that I want to say, because I think they need to happen, and I can't do it alone. Maybe we need a big fundraiser to buy a building ourself and get all the organizations together and join forces and do that. I felt bad when—and I'm not going to—I'm going to say something that's going to shock this city, but the fact is, there's some of us councilors that were there at a business meeting downtown when the lady said she left the city of Lowell because she had clients coming in, and in broad daylight, people were having sex on the bench right downtown. You know, they may be mentally ill, but they surely know what they want to do, and you just can't up and do that. So I'm going to stop right there, but, you know, there's a lot to like about Lowell, but I don't think people want to come in here and see these things happening. So I'm telling you the truth, we need help, we do have compassion, but I'm hearing now that mass and caste people are coming up to the city of Lowell. I don't think it's our responsibility for them, but yet, if we have compassion, we have to help everybody. So that's what I wanted to tell you. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mercia. Councilor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I want to thank the speakers who came up here and spoke, and thank you, Councilor Robinson, for the motions. I read the Boston ordinance. I agree with Councilor Drinkwater's that Boston ordinance draft it with care and compassion in mind. That mean that they offer unhoused house and shelter, they offer the unhoused service, and they offer them transportation. The part—the other part as well is belonging, as Ron spoke of. I think a number of months ago, when the city put out a protocol in terms of clearing the encampment, one of the suggestions that I made then was to have, working with the nonprofit, because the city is in no businesses in housing those or storage those belonging, but the city can work with its partner, the nonprofit, in doing so. So I think also the idea of inviting, this is great, inviting the unhoused representative to the table as we try to mayor our ordinance, to the Boston ordinance, so that they have some input as to maybe a little tweak, so that they have a say in how to do this and do this successfully. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Noon. If Noon has any objections, I'd like to just make a quick statement from up here also, if the council has an objection. I do agree with Councilor Drinkwater, I did read it also, but my concern is, do we have enough beds, as people had said? And I don't like the cold either. But I think that different times, when you offer something, you may get a different response. We had over the summertime, we went there, we had no response, but maybe now we'll get different responses where it's cold, and maybe we won't. But I think it is worth trying to go and see, will they respond or won't they? I agree with a lot of what Council Robinson said, and Council Rook, Council Scott, and I think that the motion is good if it can get somebody help. And that's the key, is can it get somebody help? Because as we saw just yesterday, when the lieutenant governor jumped right here, we had no problem jumping right here to take over a building in the city. But we also have mental health issues and other things that we need these buildings for also, but we didn't know that was ever going to be available for this type of issue. And if we knew that, it would have been better for the city to turn that over to something like our homeless situation and try to make right of that, long before we started trying to add to the situation. What will happen down there will be that people will get on their feet, and they'll come in and they'll take more housing away from people, so affordable housing will never be in the city of Lowell, as long as we keep taking people in who have the means to do that. So I will support these two motions because it's part of—it has the Boston piece to it, but I'm still cautious on how we're going to record the offerings to people and make sure that we document the offerings to people. How do we go about doing that so that we have a clear track that actually we're doing what we're saying we're doing and not just throw something out there for a feel-good moment? And I think that that's the key to this whole piece, as I think Councilor Drinkwater and Councilor Noon had said, is that the documentation is the big piece to this, and how do we actually implement what Council Robinson's wishes are and what the council's wishes are? With that, I'll turn the floor over to the city manager. Oh, Council Robinson.
Thank you. One thing that was touched on by my colleagues, and it's kind of disappointing to see the advocates not come out and support. We have a mammoth building that's state-owned property right now, Superior Courthouse. This council discussed—I put a motion forward to explore what can it be utilized for? I mean, how many rooms could you potentially put in a facility that size? I mean, we have options in the community. The city doesn't have the means to convert this, but I don't see anybody pleading to the state to take one of the properties that they currently own and allocate resources for redevelopment. Even if they turn that to public housing, that is going to alleviate that waiting list for a lot of people. I mean, I think sometimes it's easy to come down to a city council meeting and put your finger at the city council, in the administration. But a lot of times, if we could get that same energy guided to advocate for those kind of resources and those needs at the state level, where would we be? And I think my colleagues and I would have no problem supporting a cause like that, again, requesting from the state. It seems like—it's mentioned, I've heard multiple times in the past two days. Sadly, they have ignored the local community's priorities when it comes to housing and who needs housing and identifying suitable types of housing, and kind of just shoved their priorities down our throat, it seems. And so I think the community and this local government needs to come together and advocate for the state to look at some of the assets that they currently own and allocate some kind of resources. I mean, they're doing it in Boston. The mayor has pledged to rebuild that old facility and move some form of housing there. We have a couple in our backyard, and I think it's time that we advocate for that as well. Thank you.
Councilor Leahy.
Thank you. You know, Council Robinson throws out a few good ideas too, and, you know, we've all spoken to the state delegation and asked them that. And these are the ideas, you know, Gorham Street, with the help of the state, the Red Cross, Salvation Army, whoever. I mean, that could be an emergency shelter for people that are competent this winter. And we should put our efforts into that. You know, we've all called our state reps, we've talked to the state delegation, the governor's office, but, you know, nobody wants to budge on it. But there's a building that could be used for emergency shelter for the winter, you know? Doesn't have to be the best place in the world, as long as the toilets are working, the showers are working. We could get help from the sheriff's department to maintain law and order so people feel safe. I mean, that's where we have to go with this. And if the governor's office will return some phone calls, we'll, you know, we can work with them on this. Thank you.
Manager Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through to the council. I do apologize. Typically, I wouldn't speak on a motion by the council beforehand, but I think that it bears repeating. The city of Lowell continues to move forward with our co-op team. Substance abuse coordinators are out there pretty much five days a week and sometimes six. We have weekly health checkups right over on Summer Street to try to make it as convenient as possible, where people have the ability to get some healthcare taken care of themselves. We have open POs that is given for somebody that needs a ride someplace. Maybe they need a ride to a loved one's home, or maybe they need a ride to get additional treatment. That's all available. This is something that this council has really pushed. We have diversion that goes on consistently. If somebody once again is looking to get back in good graces or maybe to repair something with their family members, this is something that the city is doing. Today, on motion M, that we'll be talking about it later, we're talking about the most recent developments utilizing our home funds right here in the city of Lowell. And if you look real quick, out of the 57 units that have been dealt with through the our Department of Planning and Development that has been pushed by this council, many of them, 17 are a total of 30% of AMI, which is the area median income. So that's zero to 30 of people that we're dealing with in one aspect, and then another eight and another 13. We're looking right now that Merrimack Valley Food Bank redevelopment, that every council here has supported this, that's 52 restricted units. Restricted units trying to bring more affordability here to the city of Lowell. The East End Club redevelopment right now, that's going towards 35 units. Now, 16 of them are—eight of them are restricted, and the other ones could be home ownership, affordable home ownership opportunities. But the city of Lowell is doing this. ARPA right now, some of you know this, some of this has been discussed, but we're looking at, I believe it's 19 units over on Summer Street. We're also—which we're not really—this is in discussion, but I hope this were to happen, but I think it's very relevant to speak about this in this manner. We're looking, hopefully, to put 50 units specifically for women, specifically for women. And on top of that, this council has already opened up a place for trafficked women. This is all happening within the past 14 months, so, you know, I'm backing the message here that I would cha— here, that I would challenge any other city or town in the area to do, to do something, anything. But if you start to look at the number of pieces that we have done, the number of pieces that we're going to do, and to add it on top of, once again, 7.3 with the Mass Call Grant of $500,000, which to address misuse prevention and reduce use and misuse of substances, and also what the council's going to be looking, we're going to be looking for a vote on 7.6 to start that opioid settlement stabilization fund. The city of Lowell, everybody can always do more. We can always try to do something differently, or try to do more for the people who are unhoused. But I had to say this, because as, as I was listening to some of the comments, I truly believe the administration has moved with this council to try to do everything possible. And this is just the beginning. We have still ability to, this council adopted the Transportation Overlay District, which is something that this Commonwealth of Massachusetts needs, and that is going to hopefully, and I say hopefully, unleash additional housing. So, you know, once again, I think the city of Lowell is doing everything that we can. I think it's overlooked sometimes, when the number of things that we're doing. I do apologize that the, many of the councilors know this, about trying to help people, but sometimes we try to keep this as private as possible, to protect the people that, that are affected. But I can't idly stand by and, you know, hear that we're not doing enough. Because if any other town, or any other city was doing exactly what is here, right before me, we wouldn't have this problem. If any other town took on Transportation Overlay District, everything that has been going on with what this, what this council has done with the DMU zone and the downtown by pushing, by getting rid of the parking requirements, we are trying to create housing. And the more housing that we create is going to give people that, that ability to move up. And with this council's suggestions, and how we've discussed about affordable home, homeownership oppo, homeownership opportunities, which we have proved right here in the city of Lowell that can happen, and it did happen out on Gorham Street. So, I just, please, if people get a chance to look at 7.3, 7.6, motion response M, I think that this council is leading the city in the right direction, and we're going to continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Golden. Motion to accept.
Can I get a roll call, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Council Robinson, roll call, seconded by Council Rourke. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Is that roll call on the two of them?
Yep, I-6 and I-7, yep.
Mayor Chow, Council Drinkwater.
Yes.
Council Gitcher.
Yes.
Council Janess.
Yes.
Council Leahy.
Yes.
Council Mercia.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Council Robinson.
Yes.
Council Rourke.
Yes.
Council Scott.
Yes.
Council Yem.
Yes.
Ten years.
Motion passes. We're going to go back to general public hearings, now that it's past 7 o'clock. 4.1 ordinance create position council and aging chef manager. Given second reading, open hearing. All those in favor? Anybody in favor? In favor? Not seeing anyone, that portion of the hearing is closed. Anybody in opposition? Opposition? Opposition. That portion of the meeting is closed. Will of the body?
Move to approve?
Second. Approved by Council Rourke, seconded by Council Janess. Roll call.
Mayor Chow, Council Drinkwater.
Yes.
Council Gitcher.
Yes.
Council Janess.
Yes.
Council Leahy.
Yes.
Council Mercia.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Council Robinson.
Yes.
Council Rourke.
Yes.
Council Scott.
Yes.
Council Yem. Ten years.
Motion passes. Going back to the motions. 5.8, Council Rourke requests City Manager to have Transportation Engineer give a report on traffic speeding at the intersection of Mammoth Road and Fourth Ave, seconded by Council Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. A couple of concerns over the past couple of weeks up to, including last Tuesday's election. There's a couple of signs, economy blocking one another that was hard, difficult to see going across Mammoth to Fourth Ave. And then coming up, there's a couple of tree bridges that were blocking up some, some signs as well. So, obviously, speed's always been an issue in that area as well. So just, just check it out and get back, see if they can be done. Thank you.
Motion to accept. 5.9, Council Rourke requests City Manager to have DPD contact the Mass Department of Conservation and Recreation to explore the options for increasing connections to and expanding the use of Drakkar State Forest, seconded by Council Leahy. Council Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. This is a couple residents that reached out. I understand that there was a walk-through today with the start of the process. State Representative Elliott was also involved, and hopefully, DCR, too. I had a brief conversation with the Assistant City Manager, if you want to just give a couple of words, please.
Mr. Manager Golden. Assistant City Manager Machado.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yes, we met out there today, we walked the area. There's another meeting scheduled, the second week of December. DCR will draw up something, we'll have folks from DPD there. But there is a follow-up meeting scheduled for the second week in December.
Great. I think it's, anything similar to increase the walkability and the bike lanes, you know, I, there are some, I guess, trails that have been made over time, but if we could do a little more, you know, safety-wise, people have used to talk about, I think it's a great idea. So, thank you very much.
Motion to accept. 5.10, Council Rourke requests City Manager to have DPD explore options for creating a dog park at LeBlanc Park, seconded by Council Janess.
Another constituent reached out, three or four, just asked about the possibility of it. I think it'd just be looked at. That'd be great. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Motion to accept. 5.11, Council Scott.
Can I just talk on the motion? So...
On 5.10, Council Leahy.
Yeah, the dog park one. So, when we get the report, can we just, so, I think we've all had a few motions, but the last motion I asked about the micro or mini or whatever dog parks. So, can we get some feedback on that also? Like, up at Christian Hill, there's plenty of land. If we wanted to put one up there on one of the side roads, you know, the neighborhoods want it, the dog people want it. I mean, we shouldn't be exploring that, you know? They kind of made fun of the micro or mini or whatever on the radio, but, you know, whatever size you feel fits in that park. And we should get together with the people that came in, asking about the dog parks. I kind of, I forget who was here that night speaking about it, but let's try to settle the dog parks in the next few months, so we can move on to more issues. But this bringing up the dog parks every year, you know, let's do one or two and get them over with and move on to more pressing items. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council Leahy. Motion to accept. 5.11, Council Scott requests City Manager to provide a report detailing necessary steps to move forward with the election of a mayor by residence, seconded by Council Yem. We have some registered speakers.
Kendrick Delorb.
Thank you to the numbers of the council, Vice Mayor Gitcher, and Manager Golden for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Kendrick Delorb, and I represent at 128 Mount Washington Street in the acre. I'm here to speak to you to express my strong support for Councilor Scott's motion, request an administrative report on the feasibility and next steps for the implementation of direct voting for mayor in Lowell. Firstly, I would like to highlight the issue of power voter turnout during city council elections. A direct vote for the mayor by residence has the potential to significantly increase civic engagement with local politics. This, this change can empower our residents, making them feel more connected to the decision-making process that directly impacts their community. One critical aspect to consider is that, after the citywide election, the general public currently has no say in governance appointments and policymaking position hires at the local level. Direct voting for the mayor would bridge this gap, allowing residents to have a more direct and influential role in shaping the future of Lowell. Throughout history, philosophical connections to democracy have emphasized the importance of citizen participation in governance. Implementing direct voting for the mayor aligns with these principles: fostering a more inclusive and representative democratic system. And finally, I want to thank Councilor Scott for bringing forward this motion. Many residents of Lowell, including myself, have felt a severe sense of disillusionment with the Plan E form of government. And your efforts to explore alternatives, such as direct voting for our mayor, are crucial steps forward for revitalizing the civic engagement and restoring faith in local governance here in Lowell. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delorb.
Judith Durant.
Hello, thank you for letting me speak tonight. Judith Durant, 50 Viola Street. I just want to thank Councilor Scott for bringing this forward. It was two years ago that 75% of the electorate voted in favor of having a say in who is the mayor, and we have heard nothing about it in two years. So I think it's, I thank Councilor Scott for bringing it up, and it's time to address this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Durant. Councilor Scott?
One more.
One more.
Ron Peachtree.
I'm sorry, Mr. Peachtree.
That's all right. 240 Beacon Street. I'd like to reiterate what Judith said. I'm very glad that Kim's put forward this. Little clarification, 75% of the people who voted that day voted in favor of this. And I think it's important that we make some movement on it. But I also think that there's a side issue. It doesn't matter whether we have an elected or appointed mayor, if that mayor is powerless. We need a form of government where the executive branch acts as a check and a balance on the legislative branch, and vice versa. Over and over and over again in this country, we have found that checks and balances are necessary for a government to work effectively in a representative democracy. And I think in this city, we have some imbalances that we need to address, not simply electing the mayor. If we elect the mayor and he's not capable of doing anything except rubber-stamping things, we're not fixing any of the problems that really people in the acre and other places have brought up. We need a form of government where the legislative branch and the executive branch are equal in their power and their poll. Thank you.
No more of the speakers, Mr. Vice Chair.
Council Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, there has been a bit of a delay in bringing this forward several years, but I would say, I mean, we were a new council the first time with district representation. And also, I think at that time, my understanding was there was a discussion with the plaintiffs, and they had actually expressed a desire to wait one election cycle to see how the new district representation worked. But at this point in time, as some of you have stated, 75% of the voters wanted to elect their mayor. The wording on the ballot question was quite clear. I guess there is still obviously some discussion about, you know, whether people believe this is a change to Plan E. That is not my understanding of the ballot question. It just asks whether or not, you know, the residents want to directly elect their mayor, and that was overwhelming. And like I said, I think it's time for us to move forward with it. Some people will say that, you know, it was only 17.9% of the voters that voted that day, but that is the system that we use. You know, it is the representative number for who voted at that time. And I think that it's not fair for us not to listen to the people that want to choose their mayor. Thank you.
Council Robinson.
Thank you. I agree. I, I think the voters did voice that they'd like to vote in or select the mayor. One other thing I urge people to be cautious of, though, about this is, our voting numbers are very low. We saw 7,500, under 8,000 people come out the last election. City of 115,000, with alleged 70,000 registered voters. Under 10%, I believe, came out. We went to a district style of representation, because it kind of leveled the playing field. It gave voices to areas of the city that probably never would have had a voice. So I would urge people to be mindful of, while our voting numbers are so low, this potentially is a step backwards. This potentially is allowing the areas that come out to vote historically to control the fate of the mayor position moving forward. I mean, it's something to be mindful of. So I'd be curious to see, what options do we have moving forward in selecting the mayor, or allowing the residents to select the mayor, and what does that look like? Would it, would we subtract one of the at-large positions, and it would be a mayor position by itself that would run on the ballot? I mean, these are the questions that I'd like to see. What are our options when we start looking into this? And I'd appreciate the manager and his team, Elections Team, to roll out all the options before us, so we can have a really well-informed conversation. Thank you.
Council Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I filed similar motion beginning of 2023, but never got response back regarding the form and how we should proceed and all of that. So, I'm hoping by this motion, we will have some clear indication and suggestion, as Councilor Robinson said, for this entire council to vote on. Thank you.
Council Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Thank you, Council Scott, for put this motion. This is our way of honor the voters that vote some years ago. Right? So, there's a formulas. Worcester have done it, in term of how to, you know, the election, I think. The city solicitor don't have to wandering, you know, too far or creating a platform for this. I think Worcester's is one of the cities that have done something like this. So, let's look at Worcester's and let, you know, redraft it to fit Lowell, and honors the 75% of the voters that came and said they want a chance of electing the mayor. Thank you.
Council Leahy.
Thank you. I don't know, this motion, I'm not so sure about, I'm not even sure if this should go to the manager's office, because manager works for the council. This is something that maybe should go to the mayor's office for a report. There was some question whether people realized that we were going to a strong mayor, or just ceremonial mayor, what they were voting for. I do have some concerns, as Council Robinson brought up. You know, this could just turn into a popularity vote, where traditionally, where the council selects the mayor, you know, it has to do with how long you've been here, probably the, the manner, your mannerism over your career here as a counselor, your, the way you present yourself, you know, the good work you do, whatever. It just, it's kind of an honor to be selected by the members of the council to be the, the mayor. So, I would caution us to move forward. The new voting system, I think it's given the, the neighborhoods, the districts, a chance to have a strong voice, a strong representative. But again, what has happened in my case in District 3, and in Council Rourke's district, you know, nobody, nobody ran really against us. And these elections, I hope they don't go that way, but people should be coming out and challenging every year. We shouldn't run unopposed. And I'm afraid that the mayorship may turn into something more than it has to be. It's just an honor to be the mayor, it's a privilege, you get selected by your, your colleagues, and I would prefer to leave it that way. Thank you.
Council Drinkwater.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've, I feel like we've spoken on this issue a number of times. I've supported this in the past, particularly after voters have weighed in on it, and I do support moving forward with a way to explore implementing the will of the voters here. And one reason why I do believe this is the right way to go, is that frankly, residents and voters do care who their mayor is. And I think they care about who, who their mayor is in more of a way than they might care about who, say, their city council president is. In many ways, the function of the mayor of the city Lowell is very similar to the function of a city council president in, in other municipalities. However, given that we do bestow upon the position that the title of mayor, it does carry a certain extra degree of responsibility. It carries with it a responsibility to speak on behalf of the, the residents of Lowell, and to perform certain ceremonial functions. And for that reason, and I think because of that extra responsibility, and a little bit more of the weight that the title carries, residents do deserve the chance to weigh in on who will be representing them with that title. So, as, as I have in the past, I do support a path- So as I have in the past, I do support a path forward to, moving forward to hopefully implement a system where voters can weigh in on this position. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Counselor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Appreciate this motion being on and this discussion we're having tonight. As others have said, this is not the first time we've discussed this here, but I do look forward to us moving this forward. One caution I would like to throw out there just to keep in mind as we move forward is I think it's important to note that with the district-based representation that we created last cycle, two of those districts were drawn to be majority-minority districts. I think that was an important part of the settlement and an important part of this new system. I do have concerns that if we were to implement a system like Worcester's where you have to be running at large in order to put your hat in the ring to be mayor, it almost says to the majority-minority districts, appreciate you being here, you can have a seat at the table, but you can't have that seat. And I don't think that's fair. So I think as we, as we look at this and try to figure out how to implement it, we keep that in mind. As others have noted, there seems to be some confusion as to what did that ballot question mean? Did it mean strong mayor? Did it mean Plan E with a directly elected mayor? So I think whatever we do, we should make sure that we have communications with the different neighborhood groups and probably some of the other residential groups that exist within the city to have discussions with residents. What do they want to see? Make sure what we're implementing here is actually the will of the voters and not what we think the will of the voters is. But I do look forward to continuing these discussions and seeing where we go on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Janess. Counselor Mercia.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. If this were a vote to have the public vote for the mayor, and we would be changing the Plan E form of government into probably Plan B where you'd have a strong mayor and no city manager, I wouldn't support that. I like the Plan E form of government the way that we have it, but I'm certainly in favor of leaving the choice up to the public. The people have a right to weigh in on who should be their mayor. The fact is that, and I'm, and I'm thinking about what Counselor Janess said when he said the minority-majority-minority sections of the city, it's like, let's just leave it open to at-large and those that are in the minority-majority districts. You can serve, but you're never going to be mayor. That's not fair to those people as well that are representing those particular areas. I am concerned with another issue as well, as people that run and have no opposition, and they run unopposed, and they lobby to become mayor long before anybody else has a chance to throw their hat into the ring, and I think that's not fair. Of course, it's not disallowed, you can do that, but it doesn't leave any option open to those that have opposition and have a concern that, gee, maybe I can't count my chickens until I hatch. I can't say that I want to be the mayor because I haven't been reelected. Maybe I won't be reelected. Maybe someone is, has opposition and says, gee, I want to be the mayor, and then they lose the race. So there's many factors to look at when you think of that as well. I think it's not against the law, but it is a little bit disconcerting to have that happen as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mercia. Counselor Rook.
I think it's Vice Chair. I would just make the suggestion that we send this to maybe the Elections Subcommittee. Obviously, there's a lot of questions on how to do it and how to do it the right, fair way. So I would make that into form of motion.
Second.
Second by Counselor Scott. Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I do recall a while back when we discussed this matter, and when we sent this non-binding referendum to the voter back then, that we, Counselor Drinkwater, if you, we both recall that, you know, we do not want to exclude anybody. If you run district, you can put your head up for mayor. You run at-large, you could put your name up for mayor if you choose to do so. So that is the process that I believe it's the right things to do, and I believe that the plaintiff and the attorney will be fine with it. So let's have that discussions, you know, either be going to the Elections Subcommittee or get a report from the city solicitor and then send that to the Elections Subcommittee to have it vet this out. Thank you.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you. I'd just like to take a moment just to address a few of the concerns that have been brought up that I also agree with and they're concerns of mine. Counselor Janess brought up the idea of moving back to an at-large type system of voting for the mayor, and that's definitely a concern of mine. I'm thankful that we're referring this to a Subcommittee to have a discussion. I don't know if there's other formats that can be used, whether or not it's a majority of districts that win. Perhaps that's how the mayor is elected, so we can continue the discussion. But it's certainly not my intentions by moving forward with this, even though it is the will of the voters, to take a step backwards and to leave anybody out to not have a say in who is going to be the mayor. So, thank you.
If there's no objections, I'd like to just make a couple statements from up here. I don't understand how the will of 11 people tried to interpret the results of what the people wanted. This is what the people said. Whether they interpreted what was on a ballot or not, it's up to the people to decide where they want to go. And the ballot clearly stated they wanted it. They wanted to vote. That's democracy, is the will of the people. It's not the will of us. They spoke. How people can sit here and say, well, I don't like it, this, well, I didn't like it either. Maybe I voted no, maybe I voted yes. If I voted no, I lost. Now I sit here and rally against it? It's been in Subcommittee for almost the entire time of this council. It just sat there. And I just think that, I think the voter is smart enough to understand the position of the mayor is the person who will have voting power over the school committee. They voted all us in, so they were smart enough to do that. We didn't question that part. We didn't say, okay, let's change that way of doing it. So I just think that the voter spoke, and we just figure out where we're going to put it. If you're questioning the voter, you're questioning why you're sitting in those seats. Were they not smart enough to vote for all of us? I don't know. Maybe they weren't to some of yous. But at the end of the day, when it comes down to it, it comes down to this is the will of the people, and you give them their rights. So send it back to the Subcommittee, put it on the ballot, and whoever gets the most popular vote who wants to be the mayor is the mayor. That's just my thoughts from up here. Do you want to take a roll call? Is that the wish of the body or motion to accept?
Roll call.
Roll call, the Senate's, the Elections Subcommittee is out.
Yep, that's what's on the floor.
Mayor Chow. Counselor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counselor Gitchia.
Yes.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
No.
Counselor Mercia.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Rook.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yem.
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Nine yeas, motion passes. 5.12, Counselor Janess. Counselor Scott requests city manager to have the proper department evaluate the feasibility of creating a residential parking sticker program for Back Central neighborhood, which was, Counselor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. This is something that has come to me from several folks in Back Central who've gotten frustrated with the parking situation back there. As we all know, Back Central is one of the tightest neighborhoods in the city. Parking is tough, and lately, there have been people on various streets who feel like many of the cars they see parked in their parking lot aren't resident, or sorry, on their streets aren't residents, whether they're, you know, people from other parts of the city or even out of state. It's become a contentious thing. And as I was walking around knocking on doors, it was something that was talked about quite a bit. And as I was walking around in the northern part of my district, which is East Pawtucketville, you know, there's a lot of signs up there about residents, residents sticker parking only next to the universities. This isn't something that's unprecedented, that we don't do in other areas of the city. And I think the time has come to just take a look at it, possibly see what the options are, and then come to the Back Central Neighborhood Group and really have a good discussion with the folks who come to those meetings about where this stands and then go from there. You know, if there is any tweaks or suggestions from the neighbors that we can consider as we look to potentially implement something like this. Thank you.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you. I think Counselor Janess pretty much summed up all of it, except that I would just say, again, just speak with the people involved, who it affects, before we make any changes. There are concerns about parking, obviously, in that area by people that, you know, don't have driveways but live there, and a lot of people that they feel are not from the area that they're visiting or whatever. There is parking, there's parking at Olivera Field, a large parking lot that involves, you know, parking and walking a little bit further, but if you don't live in the neighborhood, maybe that's what you have to do, you know? So if they could have first access, I think it makes sense. Thank you.
Manager Golden. Counselor Leahy.
I just want to make one comment. So this came up a few years ago, and I just want to make sure when we bring this up to the residents that they understand this does not guarantee you can park in front of your house or on your street. It only recommends, it only refers that you can park in that neighborhood, because a lot of the concerns were, I can't park in front of my house. Well, this isn't going to help that either, because your neighbors now don't have to park as far maybe or whatever, but just make sure it's clear where and who can park there and does not guarantee a spot in front of your house. Thank you.
Manager Golden.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Three to the council. Counselors, I just wanted to let you know that myself and the Assistant City Manager had spoken with the Back Central Street folks, and this is more of a PSA. If people in Back Central Street are interested, Thursday night is going to be a meeting, and they are going to actually talk about this, to see if this is something that the neighborhood as a whole is going to endorse. We did have a brief discussion with Back Central, with one of the Back Central Street leaders, that this does not in any way indicate, myself, I was there, Mr. Ryan from the Parking Department happened to be there, we're having this discussion back and forth to let people know that this would not be the same as our signs, which would save a parking spot in front of your house. But there was a commitment that they would have this discussion and that they'd be back with the administration to find out what the, what their intention of the neighborhood would be. So once again, this is more of a PSA announcement. If anybody in the Back Central Street is interested, hopefully you'll stop by on Thursday or let your, let your thoughts be known. It's at St. Anthony's Church this Thursday at 7:00, 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Motion to accept. 5.13, Counselor Janess, requests city manager to have proper department analyze the city of Worcester's election policies and procedures for potential improvements to Lowell's to encourage greater turnout and civic engagement. Seconded by Counselor Leahy. We have registered speakers.
Judith Durant.
Thank you again, and thank you, Counselor Janess, for bringing this forward. I don't know what is happening with our voting numbers, but they're going down and down and down. And this year, when we compared the percentage of voters who came out last year to, last time, two years ago, to this one, people said, oh, well, we're now registering people at the registry of motor vehicles, so we have more registered voters, so that's why the percentage. I don't care what the percentage is. We had 4,579 fewer voters come out this year. So that's a fail, whether it's, doesn't matter what the percentage is, that's a fail. And I don't know what's going on. Do people, are we not getting the information out there? I know that we used to see A-Frame things placed around the city a week or so before, at least, voting that voting is coming up. I didn't see those this year at all. I could be wrong about that, but I know I didn't see them at Plain and Walgreen and Chelmsford where I drive past every day. Didn't see that. I don't know what else for outreach. I know I did get information in my mailbox that elections were coming up, and I was able to find out where my voting location was, but they weren't readily accessible on the website close enough to time. I was trying to map out people to volunteer at the polls, holding signs. And I think it was two weeks, two and a half weeks before, I went to see voting locations, and I saw the 2022 list up there, and 2023 voting locations were not up there. I saw many voters this year that said, I was told to go to the wrong place. They went to their voting location, they were told they were in the wrong place, they went to the other one. Some of them were told, no, you were right the first time, go back. I don't know where that confusion came from. A lot of people were told that they were inactive voters this year, and they did fill out the census. So how did that happen? I don't know the answers for any of this, I'm just saying that there were a lot, a lot of frustrations this year, and we're not going to get people to come out if they come out and face that, showing up and saying, sorry, you're no longer registered. So anyway, I would appreciate this research, whether it's, yes, comparing to another city is great, but also I think a little reflection on what we're doing here and what we can do better. We can't just depend on our nonprofits that are going out there, and candidates certainly can't do that, as we know. There's limited resources. I know, I'll get out, I'll get out in a minute, but there's limited resources, and so we go after those that we know vote. We don't have the resources to go after everyone else, so we need to find a solution to this. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durant.
Tara Hong.
I would like to speak for this. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor, City Counselor, City Manager, and everyone here at home. My name is Tara Hong. I'm a resident of Lowell, live at 22 Canton Street. I'm here tonight to support Counselor Janess's motion. We call upon the city to analyze the city of Worcester election process and procedure. This is an important step toward identify potential improvement that can help apply to Lowell electoral framework. Our democracy, democratic system thrive when it's inclusive and representative of diverse voice within our community. Our city have faced seeing Lowell turnout in almost every election, and this year's is even grosser, like Judith said. I think it would be best for us to seek different way to change and improve for the city. By undertaking and having a conversation with the city of Worcester, we to ask them, how did it do it? You know, we'll partner with them, and we can open the door to valuable insight, the best practice that may serve as a blueprint for enhancing voter turnout and civic engagement in our city. Hoping as well to connect, so the city can connect with them to ask how they set up their voting location, how they train their poll worker, how they do the outreach and education, and so on. I know that this can possible, because from last meeting that we was here, talk about get the Instagram page to put up to reach out to voter, the Election Commissioner mentioned that they were expanding in staff in election office, so hoping that those will benefit going forward in helping and doing the reach out in our community. I also want to suggest that going forward, the city should bring nonprofit organization to the table and talk and work together as a group. Nonprofit like Low Vote, CMAA, CBA, Lower Line, LCC, they do the voting outreach and education every single election, and the city have those resource and can work with them to improve the way on how you can and you want to engage more voting in our community. Furthermore, the initiative aligning with our shared commitment to be frosting and robust and vibrant democracy, it can send, and it will send, a powerful message to our resident that you, delegating and committing to refine our electoral system to ensure they reflect the value in transparency, accessibility, and fairness. Thank you for letting me speak tonight, and hoping you all to support Counselor Janess's motion and make it happen in the next election. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hong.
Carolyn Snow.
Hello, everyone. I'm going to echo what Tara said. He said it much better than I could. Our voter turnout was so low this year, and for all the work that our nonprofits put in and all of our candidates put in, we did not have a competitive election. We did not have a competitive city council election, we did not have a competitive school committee election, and that has to change. election, and that has to change. We have to engage our residents. We have to make people realize that they can come from here to there. They can cross that podium. We as a city have to do better. Our election department must do better, and I am very curious to see how Worcester did and what they, how they got their numbers to be so high. It is vital that we start to have more diversity in our city, both with speakers and on the council and school committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snow.
Van May Amma.
Hello, councilors. My name is Van, 346 Princeton Boulevard, and I echo everything that everyone has said. In empathizing with why people might not show up, one can say that people are busy and they forgot, or that the world politics make them feel hopeless and powerless. On a personal note, I did experience a glitch in the system wherein which I was checking my registration status. Nothing showed up for me. However, at the polls, I was marked as registered, and I don't think I was the only one with this issue. Even though we did see a regression in voter turnout, now is the time for Lowell's election department to expand to meet the needs of its voters. We cannot control people getting out of their houses and driving to the election polls, but I do believe that the city can create infrastructure to support voter registration and election day marketing. When you look at Worcester's population size, being over 205,000 people and their voter turnout this year being 19.47%, Worcester is clearly implementing some things that Lowell can look to. Having lived in Worcester for a short period of time, I will note that their usage of citywide texting is a simple yet crucial way in keeping up with the growing population and our tech-savvy society. For the city, it is an inconvenience to implement something new. It costs money and time and resources, but nothing good ever comes easy. By improving election day marketing and even increasing election staff and funding, Lowell city councilors can be a more accurate depiction of what our population wants in government, and currently, 7,000 voters out of 75,294 registered voters is not a clear one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ma. Counselor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Before I begin, I just want to say that I appreciate the work of everyone who worked hard on this election. Our election staff, our poll workers, our election commission. I know everybody put a ton of time into this, and this motion is by no means an indictment of anyone's job. I'm not saying anyone did a bad job. I had someone reach out to me asking that. That is not what I'm saying. I also want to thank the voters, voters and residents who came out to speak tonight in favor of this motion. I think there's a few different things that we can take away from this election. One, I understand that the biggest time commitment on the part of our elections department this past year was implementing, implementing the new election system, the new machines. That takes a lot of work, and I'm sure there was a lot of focus spent on that. But we've got three elections coming up next year. We've got the presidential primary, the state primary, and the general election. So there's lots of opportunities for us to try to do better as we move forward before the next municipal election. In talking with friends and other folks in Worcester, some things I've learned that they do that we may want to consider here in the city of Lowell are their ballot drop boxes. We currently have one, which was located inside the police department this year. The city of Worcester has a drop box at every single fire station around the city. That makes it easier for residents to be able to drop their ballots off in a secure way, in a building that's manned, and then election staff will go out and retrieve those ballots, rather than making someone come downtown to drop their ballot off. As mentioned by one of the speakers, Worcester has the ability to text people and remind them of upcoming elections. It's a system that they call Worcester Alert or Alert Worcester. They sent out text messages about recruiting poll workers, which obviously generates interest and awareness of the election. They sent out reminders as the registration deadline was coming up. Check your registration. Make sure you're active. Make sure you're registered at the right address. And then coming up to the election itself, and early voting and in-person day, election day, they reminded people, hey, there's an election happening. So things like that, I think, are things that we can take away from this and see how we can implement them here. Maybe we can't do it right away. I know some of our systems are, you know, different than Worcester's. We don't have the same texting system, but, you know, maybe it's something we can do. Maybe it's something we can look at implementing. They're also using the 3-1-1 app to alert people about elections now, and I know that's something that's on our radar, and so maybe we should just keep a, keep a note on that for when we do get down the line on that. I will say, I do, I do feel like there were a few things that we've done in past elections that, that didn't happen this year. Mr. Durant mentioned the A-frames that are usually at the busier intersections around the city a week or so before the election. I didn't see them either. I'm sure that that just, you know, got missed, but hopefully we can, we can put that back in the rotation for next time. We've got the big LED road signs around the city. Last Thursday, the one at Nesmith and Andover was still advertising early voting. On election day, I saw one that was asking folks to call the DPW because we need plows, and I understand we need that, but I just feel like on election day, it would have been nice if all those signs said, hey, it's election day. Little things like that, they may help. I don't think any of them are going to be a fantasy or nothing. There's no silver bullet here. It's just a lot of hard work, and it's a lot of little things. Additionally, I think that one of the drivers of turnouts, turnout is contested races and is unfortunately negative partisanship. If you don't like someone and you don't want them to win, that's one of the most motivating things that you have to get out and vote. That's not necessarily something we should aim for, is to have the healed candidate just to drive turnout, but I will mention that that can be a factor, and I am aware of that. I think having a bunch of uncontested races on the ballot this year did, did present a challenge for turnout. I also heard many stories, as was echoed, about issues with registration, issues with whether or not a voter was active. Someone in my building who has a fairly common name went to the Rogers School to vote and was told, I'm sorry, you're in the wrong location. You have to vote at Green Alge, because he had the same name as someone who votes at Green Alge. And then he went up to Green Alge, and they told him, no, you were right the first time. Go back to Rogers. So things like that are not necessarily in the spirit of this motion. This motion is more about what we can do to, to greater promote and get people engaged overall. Other things, training issues, we'll work them out. I know that that's, that's on everyone's radar, and we can, we can work on that. But I'm just interested to, to see if we can take a look around, see what other cities are doing. I mentioned Worcester simply because it is a plan E city, so they have a very similar method of government as we do. I thought it was a good benchmark and a place to look, but other cities, Somerville, Cambridge, have seen upticks in, in their municipal voting as well. So I think there may be lessons to learn in other cities as well, but Worcester was just a place to start, and I appreciate all the efforts of, of everyone to get us there. I know it's a long road, but we're all going to go it together. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Janess. Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. Thank you to the speakers, and a lot of great points have been raised. Couple things. 3-1-1. We've been waiting almost two years. I put this motion in, I think, back last January. It gives full capability for the city to communicate directly to the residents. I think two years to stand this up is unacceptable. I, I've said it many times. If we have to bring in a contractor to do it, because whatever's happened in the house, so be it. I mean, I think we've been waiting way too long for this 3-1-1 system to be stood up. It was well before we were hacked, and now, after the hack, it's still the same excuses. So I think that's something I'm hoping we can get on, whether it's bringing a neutral third party to stand it up for us and train whoever needs training internally, whatever it takes, because 3-1-1 is not going to only benefit us with elections, it's going to benefit us for constituent services in many other areas. I had volunteers working with me that, that come from another country, Hispanic, and, and talking to them, when they first came here, they, they explained to me. It was like a culture shock. Elections in their homeland, they said, was like a festival atmosphere to get people engaged, to spur excitement, and people engaged, and they targeted a lot of younger audiences. You can see that, this country's done that. National elections, when they really wanted to start targeting younger voters, you started seeing things on TV like Rock the Vote and all those things that kind of catered to that younger demographic. I think all these things we need to be mindful of and put some sweat equity into, and look, we know the outcome we're all looking for. So I think we're going to have to address this in many different ways. So for the younger voters, the traditional way of encouraging people to get out and vote, I think the data shows, it's not effective. They want something else. So I think it's time that we really enlist people that understand and have the finger on the pulse of the younger voter to try to engage them more. I've seen an email that came across today to all of us, where there was some great points and, and great suggestions and ideas as well. So I think members of the community understand different components to increase engagement. I think it's, it's our responsibility to listen, and I know it is a ton of work, and I think our election commissioner has been doing a great job, but I think there's always room for improvement, and I thank my colleague for bringing this up. And, and something as simple as the digital sign boards. I mean, a city this size, I don't think it's unreasonable to try to secure maybe eight total and have one in each district at a, at a high-traffic area. I mean, these, these are small adjustments, but in the grand scheme of thing, they could pay you large dividends. So thank you, and I'm going to keep pushing. That 3-1-1, I think, is long overdue. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Robinson. Counsel Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, Counsel Janess already mentioned what I was going to bring up, but in Worcester, there were 11 city council seats. There was an election for the mayor, which I'm sure drove a lot of voters out, and I'm not trying to diminish anything that you've brought up, because it's all very important that we find out how we can improve these numbers. But they also had multiple candidates running for every seat, including the school committee. I'm sure having unchallenged at-large school committee races, at-large races here on this council, I'm sorry, district seats, that only had one person running, I'm sure did not help our numbers at all. So of course, you know, I would have liked to have run unopposed myself, but you know, it's not the healthiest thing for our system, not to have challengers that run. So I hope more people put their name on the ballot. Thank you.
Counsel Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I want to thanks the, the poll workers and the speakers tonight, and as well Counselor Janess for putting this motion on. We identify in a number of better way to do, to recruit, to get people out to vote. I was told that this year, there's a huge number of inactive voter in many of the poll location, and those inactive voters said that they vote every year, and that they fill out a census form. I don't know what's go wrong there. We need to look into it and to see what's wrong with it and correct it for the next election. We, I also didn't, didn't either see a frame that I know that previous election that was in many of the corner in the city of Lowell tell you, you know, election's coming up, and tell you more information on that frame. I remember at that time that the previous directors of election department, I saw he himself, you know, put those in many of those corner in the city of Lowell. I did not see it this year. This little thing that everyone spoke of go a long way in making sure that, you know, we get to the voter and tell them when and where. And so I hope that, you know, looking at Worcester's and other city and town that do well, you know, improve our elections going forward. Seventy, seven, seven and eight percent turnout is a disgrace, to say the least. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Noon. Motion to adopt, I mean, motion to accept, sorry. Six Communication from City Manager. 6.1 Motion Responses. Motion Response A. Create a Part of Soft-Money Affordable Housing Production. Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the administration and specifically Connor Baldwin. I think this is a great report. I think you nailed it. I appreciate how informative it is. Excuse me. I love how you lay out the different options and opportunities that we have to create a part of money with this. And the recommendation here, I would like to refer this, if, if possible, to the Economic Downtown Development Subcommittee for further discussion, because I think there's some great, great suggestions and opportunities available for us to explore. Thank you.
Motion to refer this to the Downtown Economic Subcommittee.
Development Subcommittee, yes.
By Counselor Robinson, seconded by Counselor Scott. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Motion B. Housing Stability with Attachments. Counselor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Thank you to Ms. Fitzpatrick and Ms. Golden for this response. It's great, great to know that this work is being handled within the city as part of the Housing Task Force and the various city partners. As long as the work's getting done, I, I would agree that we don't need to, you know, create this department and replicate the work, but, you know, I think it's something to keep an eye on as we move forward. If we ever start having gaps or anything, might be a way to address that, but for now, I'm just happy to know that this work is, is being addressed, and I thank everyone for their work on it.
Counsel Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. It's nice to know that we have a task force on homelessness and sustainability housing, but I can count 10 people on it that are no longer here with us, or maybe they still are. I don't know. You get Eileen Donahue, Kara Keefe, Alex McGee, Karen Vigaro, Kelly Richardson, Gary Wallace, Adam Gavi, Joseph White, Bill Gah. Are these people still on board?
Mr. Manager.
I apologize, Counsel. That was from August 8th, 2019. That was just making the announcement. We were just including it in the packet. That's how it was originally announced.
So I'm taking it these positions, these people will be asked to come back, or they will be replaced by somebody else, maybe, but okay. Thank you.
Ms. Fitzpatrick.
Mr. Manager, Counsel, Counselor Gitcher, we are in the process of figuring out who is going to be on the task force. Yeah. There are some people on it already, and we're going to, actually, someone on, in the group is going through that list to figure that out.
Thank you, Counsel Mercia. Motion Response C. Riverwalk Outdoor Art Craft Exhibit Space. Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. Thank you for this event. I'm looking forward to the pilot program and see how this works out. I think we've all discussed, that is a location that could serve a very unique purpose, and it'll be a draw to the community, because no one's really doing that in the, at least in the Merrimack Valley. So I'm looking forward to these pilot programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Robinson. Motion Response D. Public Art Wall. Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Case for getting right on this. I think this is something I wouldn't even really get into, if you'd like to present it. I think it's great that we found a partner in the community that's excited about this as well, with Mill City Grows. So I'm curious, anxious to see how this plan plays out.
Thank you, Ethel. Yes, we were very, very pleased when we reached out to Mill City Grows, since they have space sort of around the city. They were very excited to sort of work with us on a pilot program. They've sort of experimented with this a little bit on their own, and are eager to sort of have a partner who can help sort of elevate what they're already doing, and we're looking forward to launching that with them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Crew. Thank you, Counsel Robinson. Motion Response E. Bike Racks. Counselor Gitcher, thank you for the report. I have no comment. Counselor Noon.
Yeah, if, if I may, Mr. Vice Mayor, thank you to Mr. Ryan for the report. When you're talking about, you know, provide report on the plans to replace a bicycle talking about, you know, provide report on the plans to replace a bicycle rack in downtown, it's correct that we only have one rack in downtown. However, if you think about this, that every, every meter pole can use as a bike rack. We removed all of them. Now, in downtown, there's no bicycle rack. I'm not sure where, where you think the people who ride bike, or no, put their bike. The further one is National Park, the building there. So I just don't understand why we remove it in the first place and especially the meter pole. The bike rack is only one bike rack and that bike rack been removed. Correct, technically, only one. But all this meter pole, we could use as bike rack. We encourage people to bike, to walk. Yet, we do the opposite. Trouble by me. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Counsel Noonan. Motion Response F. Line Painting. Oh, I'm sorry. Counsel Lehe.
Thank you. In conjunction with this, Mr. Manager, through you to the manager, so I was, you know, we're an arts town and I was kind of hoping that the art community would partner with us and come up with some creative bike racks that we could put throughout the city, you know. And I brought this up to you before and brought this up. I mean, we should have creative art throughout the downtown, whether it's a bike rack or what they do in other cities where you have the bench and you have a statue of somebody on the bench, you know, Einstein, Mr. Baldwin, whatever, somebody on the bench sitting there, you know, and creative things, you know, in front of the library, you know, book type of creative statues and things like that. That's what I would like to see us working with and partnering with the community to do these. We have sculptures, we have artwork, we have paintings, you know. The public art building should be on the buildings, you know, like what we did over at Market Street and the Athenian Corner. I thought that's what we were going to be heading towards more, you know, these huge, what they did at Middlesex Community College, that, that art program over there. So with the bike racks, I'd like to see us try to partner up and come up with some creative, different looking bike racks and such things throughout the city. So, thank you.
Counsel Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Yeah, I agree with my colleagues here. I would like to see more bike racks around the downtown. If we want people to use their bikes, we got to give them places to lock them up. I know there are a few around. There are some in the garages outside the new gym at the high school. There's a row of bike racks and there's some here or there. Previously, when we discussed bike racks, I asked if the locations of the bike racks could be added to the Go Lowell map. I don't know if that's happened or not, but if not, I would like to ask again that we do that. Just the more people know about where they can safely store their bike if they want to come down and have lunch or dinner, you know, and make sure their bike's there when they come out, the better off we'll all be.
Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. I love what my colleagues are bringing to the table and I think we've seen, even with the POW MIA table, we have a whole, the largest artist community, I believe, at least in this region, right on Western Ave. I mean, we have steel and metal workers, you name it. So I'm pretty sure, I'd almost guarantee that members of that art community at Western Ave would probably be thrilled for the opportunity to create some public art that would serve as bike racks and any other kind of public sculptures or anything that we could dream up. I think that they've shown, they step up to the plate as soon as we ask them and I think we need to tap into some of that creativity over there while providing something to the community that we're looking for. So I would urge, please, reach out to Western Ave and see there any artists over there that'd be willing to try to work with us to provide some creative bike racks. Thanks.
Motion Response F. Line Painting. Counselor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Appreciate the response. I appreciate the effort to get the Ls and Ts painted in and around the downtown. As was mentioned in other discussions, when we removed the, all the poles, people were getting creative about where they parked, to put it mildly. So having the lines there to gently encourage people what is and is not a space, I think is important and something that, you know, we got to stay on top of, particularly when we make a big change like removing all those poles. You know, some places are better than others and I understand it's a constant battle and it's work that has to be done all the time because they wear out. But I appreciate the effort and, you know, as much as we can do to keep up with that, I'll be very appreciative. Thank you.
If no one has any objections, I just would ask the manager one question from up here. During election, we stood at the Riley School in the Sullivan Lot. If we could put direction arrows over there, just telling people where the in and out is, just run arrows so they actually follow where it doesn't say, it says do not enter, but if we had arrows on the ground showing them the direction, it would be much easier. The Riley here, the Riley, between the Riley and Sullivan. Thank you. Motion Response G. Parking Outreach. Counselor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I appreciate the work that's been done on this. I know it's a challenge. This motion I put on because a business owner downtown told me that they didn't know about the free parking, the 15-minute parking. And I don't know if there's an opportunity here. The old kiosks, we had kind of appliques that had some information about parking. With the new kiosks, that information isn't there. You know, there's no, there's nothing until you actually interact with the screen that tells you anything about parking. I don't know if that might be an opportunity for something that we could, excuse me, redo on the newer kiosks, just to give people a little bit of information about parking downtown and, you know, what their options are. I think it might be nice and a little more welcoming for folks.
Manager Golden?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Counsel, you're talking about maybe on the side like a sticker or something to that effect?
Yeah, exactly.
Mr. Ryan and I have been talking about the stickers on the side is to try to lead people to utilizing the app on the phone or whatever the case may be and give other information there. So that's something that we are, we have looked at and I don't know if that...
So we can get wraps for the kiosks. I've kind of resisted that just because they look nice, you know, and I don't want to, you know, mock them up. But we do have some wraps from Passport Parking that do indicate how to do the Passport App and we can stick those on the kiosk. And we've actually tried some labels the past weekend up at the U Lowell game for the event parking. That didn't work out that well, but we're trying a couple of different ways to put labels on them. So we will continue to do that.
Thank you. Motion Response H. Leo Roy Garage Work. Counselor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I have a lot of these this week. Thank you for the report. I will kind of push back a little bit only because the motion response mentions emails that were sent by Laz. I never got one of those emails, neither did my wife. We both park in the Roy Garage. One of us, we get our parking through our condo association. One of us, we pay the garage directly. My wife gets emails from Laz all the time about the monthly bills and some other emails that they've sent in the past, but she did not get anything about the garage work. And some others I've asked also did not see that email. So I don't know if they need to check their lists or what, but, or if it got caught in a spam filter or something like that. But I think we got to do a better job with outreach. I had a lot of people who were upset and frustrated with the garage situation. There was one weekday where two floors were closed and the whole garage filled up and they even had to turn monthly parkers away because there was nowhere for people to park. And you and I have talked about the issues with staffing on the garages at many, many occasions, which I just have to say Laz has got to get better at. The amount of times that I've seen people stuck and can't get out of the garage and there's no one there to help them, you know, I feel bad. There's nothing I can do to help. And I've seen people like try to, try to badge people out with their badge and then they can't get out and it's just, it just causes chaos, particularly in the morning and evening rush hours. The garages need to be staffed. There need to be people there. So whatever we can do to push Laz in that direction and get them to see the light, you know, I appreciate it.
Right after this, we did have, I did have a hot to hot talk with Laz. The general manager and the regional vice president came to my office last week. We had a good talk about staffing, the equipment issues we've been dealing with. I know there's an outstanding motion to provide information on outages. And we had a pretty serious talk about the situation. There always seems to be a lack of two or three people that were always trying to fill those positions. I don't know how they're going to fix that, but I've told them to fix it. We are also trying to get internet into the Roy Garage so that we can get the new equipment that's sitting at the early garage installed at the Roy Garage. Same at the Lowell locks. We're working on that too. But we have new equipment to install over there, which will resolve a lot of issues with people getting in and out. And I've asked Laz to put me on all the emails because I'm a cardholder too, so that when they send an email to any garage, I get it. So, and I will absolutely check your email.
Thank you. And it's not just me, you know, it's...
It's, yes, correct. It's a lot of people.
There's a lot of folks in the downtown and we're all reliant on those garages. And so when things go awry, it affects a lot of people. But I appreciate your efforts and I appreciate you holding Laz's feet to the fire here and, you know, I'm hoping we'll get that ship turned around.
Thank you, Counsel Janess. Motion Response I. Opioid Settlement Funds. Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. Thank you for this report. And what do we need to do for all the recommendations that's in this report? It says there's a vote prepared. So we could create opioid mitigation stabilization fund? I would move to create that fund, absolutely. So can I put that in the form of a motion?
It's on the agenda tonight.
Oh, then can we move the vote currently?
We'll get, we'll get to it in a couple of minutes if that's all right.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion Response J. Fire Station Capital Repair Update. Counselor Noonan?
Noonan. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Baldwin, Chief, Chairman. This is a very, a very dated motion and motion respond. I, you know, since then, I know that we, the council agreed to, you know, put it, I think in the form of ordinance to hire an assistant fire chief in that Mr. Keen now in charge. And I'm pleased that he's managed and worked to complete some of those projects that we have in the firehouse. I know that, you know, we going to have a OPF some sort to kind of manage that. I think it's also in the budget 2024, which is very important because, you know, these firefighters, they, that's where they sleep. Most of the, they work late and they stay there and condition of those firehouses is not good enough for them. It's not right for them, especially when we're going to have a new fire truck come in, you know. So you need to take care of, you know, the frontline, you know, first responders, firefighters. So I'm happy to see that we, you know, we, that assistant fire chief, Keen, are working on it. So thank you for the report and thank you, the chief and assistant fire chief.
Counsel Lehe.
Thank you. So I, thank you for the report. And I too can recognize that, you know, the fire chief, Mr. Keen, Mr. Byrne, Mr. Vaughn, the manager's office, a lot's been getting done lately. But again, I would like to see us do a little bit more, you know, in the old days maybe, I don't know if we can implement this in the contracts, but, you know, some of these firefighters, they have separate jobs aside from being a firefighter. They're painters or carpenters or electricians. And we should be able to take advantage of their skills. If they're qualified, they should be able to submit applications to do work at these firehouses or wherever. But, you know, we just cannot handle all the work with our staff and we have to start subbing this out to get the work done. You're doing a great job, Mr. Manager, with taking a look at the work staff, improving the wages for them, incentivizing them to get some work done, adding to the numbers. But we do need to catch up on these firehouses. And I understand the structural work's getting done, which is very important for the new trucks. Some of the windows, the doors, the roofs, that stuff's been getting done. But again, we've got to get caught up on some of the plumbing, the carpentry and the painting. And this stuff is important to these guys that, and women that stay there 24 hours a day on their shifts. It's important to the neighborhoods that these firehouses are in. And again, you know, we do have an old, the firehouses are old, but the buildings are solid. But we have to maintain them, you know. We have to maintain the structure, the facades. And it's, it's okay if we do a few windows, but we can't just do a couple of windows every year on every building. So if there's any way we can implement to get subcontractors in there to do extra work, it would be much appreciated. And, you know, the philosophy that this administration has really stood by, let's do it once, let's do it correct, and we don't have to worry about it again. We know we have to get some of the plumbing situations corrected, which shouldn't have been done the wrong in the first place. There's no other way to say it. So, you know, I applaud the effort that everybody's been doing lately. We're making great strides, but I really want to make sure we continue this and get these buildings caught up. We deserve it. The community deserves it. And of course, the fire department deserves this. So for the effort and what they sacrifice to give us, it's the least we can do for them. Thank you.
Manager Golden?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Counsel, thank you very much for those comments. I'm very pleased with, with what's been happening with Chief Sharon, Chief Keen, and I have to give a shout out to Mr. Byrne and his, of course, Paul St. Seid, our commissioner. But over the past year, we have really aggressively gone at this, as the council knows, especially with the fire apparatus, which will be coming as soon as possible. But I think that the, the amount of thanks goes out to the team that has really been working tirelessly over approximately the last, last year to make sure that Old Ferry is almost completed, the training center is completed, all the abatements have been completed. Counsel, you had brought up the fact about the plumbing issues that, to my, to my knowledge, have been completed. But we have a long way to go. With an average age of 108 years of age, there's 108 years of age for our, for our fire stations. We do have a bit to go and I thank the, the men and women of the Lowell Fire Department for tolerating this and, but help is on the way. And I think that this council and this administration has shown that. And if you give us a little bit more time, I think I'm going to feel very confident with the OPM that we're going to be bringing forward to ensure that some of the new equipment will be able to, to be held in the houses. Now, this is nothing new. Talking to the chief today about this, this is something we've had to do in the past when vehicles got a little bit wider than they are and today they just happen to be a little heavier. So we, we're going to take this aggressive stance to continue moving forward and I thank the council for all the support and I'm sure that the fire department does as well. But given that the number of pieces that we have ignored, we'll just continue plugging, plugging away, moving forward and getting it accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Manager Golden. Motion Response K. Seal of Glass Pens and STEM. Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the solicitor, Corey Williams. This is something, again, I think this is an example of providing law enforcement yet another tool in the toolbox to do their job. I think the pandemic hurt... I think the pandemic hurt a lot of these efforts, courts weren't open, people weren't really getting up close and personal, they didn't really want to make these arrests. But we've seen coming out of the pandemic, unfortunately, some people smoking whatever right in front of our police. And I think if you pick up the little sun, you see these efforts now, you see our law enforcement. And, and we're not trying to police our way out of substance abuse problems or any of that. It's just a matter of, of establishing certain illicit behaviors are not going to be tolerated. And, and I commend law enforcement professionals for, for really stepping up and, and dealing with a lot of these issues. So through you to the solicitor, again, thank you for this, but what does the timeframe look like in, in everyone's eyes on this? Because it looks like a recommendation, which rightfully so, would be to notify the stores first, and then would it just be rolled out automatically? Would it require a vote to adopt? Like what, what would be the [inaudible]?
Sure. So really it would be just working with the manager's office, putting together something that we could send out to the businesses. Once that gets mailed out, I mean, that wouldn't take very long. Once that gets out, just really it's more of a courtesy, just to provide them notice. Once they have that, I mean, it can be enforced right away. I mean, this ordinance is already on the books, so that's something that we'd be able to do right away.
Thank you. And now, has this been sent over to be discussed with law enforcement yet?
No, and, and I think that would be without a doubt, something that would happen when we're putting together those letters. That would be a good opportunity for, as I said, through the manager's office to work with the police department, say, you know, this is what we're looking at, this is going to go out, put everyone on notice, here's the ordinance, because everyone's going to need a refresher in this, this is, I know it's there, but really it's kind of new. And then everyone would be on the same page and we could, city could put their best foot forward.
Greatly appreciated. So it sounds like you have a path forward and the sooner we can get this put together and rolled out and then bring in law enforcement for an update on it, greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Robinson. Motion response L assess staffing shortages in law department, Councilor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Thank you to the city's solicitor for the report.
Thank you, Councilor Noon. Motion response M housing program. If no one has any objections, I'll just respond from up here. Thank you, Manager Golden and your team for this response. I think that as we look at it, there's a lot of really good information for everybody to read when you look at the first time home bias program, the housing rehabilitation, energy rehabilitation program, the home rental housing development program, and just the most recent development utilized home funds. I think that you'll see there's a lot of information here that we talked about in housing issues that are prevalent in our city and, and how we're trying to address these issues. And I think, I thank this council and I, and I thank you for putting this forward. I thank your team, Ms. Baez Rose, the Assistant City Manager, DPD, and your staff for all the hard work that went into this, but it can't stop here. We still have to keep driving forward and, and reports like this, I would love to see more often, maybe once every three months, so that we could all have adjustments and understand exactly where our city is going in how we're combating the housing shortage and the affordable housing piece. Councilor Yem, you had your hand up?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I just want to commend the report and then the, the good work that the city have done, particularly with the Merrimack Valley Housing Partnership, the down payment assistance. I personally have involved in the first time home buyer with the Merrimack Valley Housing Partnership, teaching the class in the Khmari for the Cambodian family who want to purchase their first home. And I remember there's a, a down payment assistance. At first it's 5,000, if you live in, in your home for five years, it will be forgiven, but then it's more needed than the city would say will recall back after the five years, you start to pay a small portion back. Or if you refinance or sell the home before five years, the money will be, will come back to the city. And this kind of program that is really ongoing and many, many more family have benefit from this, this program. And I, and I commend the city to continue this, the working relationship with the MVHP and, and, and to promote first time home buying. So thank you and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Council Robinson.
Thank you. Again, I think MVHP and a lot of these partners that we've been utilizing are doing great things. One thing that I kicked around briefly, speaking to someone at MVHP, and I think I will be bringing something forward to start looking at, I'd love to see the city maybe implement and, and offer employees a direct pipeline to where we have vacancies, we're, we're, not only will we offer you employment with the city, we also have a program available for our employees to help you purchase a home in the city through MVHP. So I think incentivizing, including that into employment package is something that I think in the future, we might want to take a look at and see how do we get to that? Because again, that's another perk to help our employees and to be an attractive employer. Thank you.
Council Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also just like to highlight an area that I'd like to see us focus more on, and that would be around owner occupancy. I was surprised to see the number of residence, homes in the city that are owned by people outside of the city. I'd like to see us invest more money for down payment assistance for multifamily homes and also to look whether or not there's a possibility of a tax credit for being an owner occupied residence. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Scott. Motion response, Council Yem.
Thank you. May I just add on to that, that the city provides some fund, either home fund or APFA fund or, you know, Preservation Act fund to develop affordable housing. I would like to see a certain percentage of that not being rented, but its owner occupies, similar to the, the acre crossing. You have 32 units affordable and then 17 will be ownership. So this way it helps build a generational wealth for the family who never have an opportunity to own a, a piece of the, the city and real estate. So that, that would be my, my preference and I encourage the city to look into that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Yem. Motion response N Malevich Riverwalk, Councilor Noon, Council Mercy, Council Mercy.
Thank, thank you. Maybe I have Council Mercy go first.
I know that you could handle it, but Councilor Noon and myself thought it would be rather fitting to do something in memory of Bob Malevich, who was an exceptional city worker, DPD director. And not only that, when he retired, he came back and joined the planning board to give further of himself. He was, he had a vision to create a riverwalk along the Merrimack River. And that's what Councilor Noon and I thought maybe we could name a portion of that riverwalk in his memory. But it's already known by two other names, the Mile of Mills Riverwalk and the Yankee Division Walkway. So it was only fitting that we wanted to give him something separately and more fitting to his memory. So it was an idea that it would be the new pedestrian bridge over the Concord River and that it's near the Lowell Memorial Auditorium. That would be wonderful. It has to go before the board now, the naming of, of that, the monument committee. So I'm sure that it would probably pass, but this is a fitting gesture for a wonderful gentleman. So then the family is very, very excited over it. Thank you.
Councilor Noon.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Thank you, Councilor Mercy. I agree with everything Councilor Mercy has said. First, let me just thank Assistant City Manager, DPD Director, Joe Wani, by Rose, and, and also Steve Stowe. And Steve Stowe's idea, Council Mercy, given that the riverwalk had been already named to two individuals already, and Steve Stowe said, let, let's do this, let name the new pedestrian bridge over the Concord River. And he reached out to Ms. Malevich and she's, and the family is very happy with the idea. So, and giving also that Mr. Stowe is a monument, a committee chair, I think this go a long way in terms of getting passed, Council Mercy.
Thank you, Councilor Noon. Motion response O audit of citywide overtime expenditures, Councilor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Again, thank you to CFO Connors and the city auditors, Kelly Oak. I, I'm happy with the report, but also see maybe if Mr. Baldwin can give a tentative timeline as far as say, you know, when we're going to have the, to hire the CPA to conduct this more intense, intensive audit, you know, of overtime. Do you have a timeline for what, Mr. Baldwin?
CFO Baldwin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So we, we have been in contact with Clifton Larson Allen CPA firm and we have a, a scoping meeting with them coming up on, on Monday. And we expect the, the project will take four to six weeks of sorts, but after that meeting, we'll have some more information. We've already sent them some files and some preliminary analysis that's been conducted by the finance department for them to get a head start, but we, we do expect coming back after that with some more lessons learned and, and information from the audit to the council at the conclusion of the audit.
Would you please share with the council when the, the report is done? Thank you.
One question from up here, if there's no objections, just through CFO Baldwin. On the, when you look at the street department and the parks department and that jump, would you contribute that to some of the homeless work that, that is costing us overtime funding? CFO Baldwin, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So it's, it's kind of worth noting, on the report, the amounts for each department here are from all funding sources. So to answer your question directly, yes, that is a component of it, the additional work, the initiatives by the administration to do cleanups, whether it's for homeless camps, for special events, for special directed initiatives, would all be incorporated here, as would any overtime funded by the snow and ice account. So the way it was broken out was by department, but as the council is aware, that is a separate account that the city can deficit spend under the law and they're all lumped together here. So the spike that you see in 22 and 23 is associated with a, the aggregate of those factors.
Would you be able to break out the cost of the homeless cleanouts or is, is that not really broken down that way in your overtime?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fairly certain that's something we can do. Those, the funding sources for those have been, they are identifiable and so, yes, we could follow up with a report to further detail costs associated with cleanups.
I'm just concerned when we start looking at the cost of the homeless to the city and, and then when we start asking for help in other places, that we just would have a breakdown so all of us understand what are the costs to the, our city and, and that's the only reason why I asked that question. Council Robinson.
Thank you. I see a lot of this, in this spike stuff, shouldn't we be keeping it separated out instead of just bundling the overall costing? I mean, I'm seeing a sharp increase and, and it almost seems like in some instances, we're giving blank checks to departments for overtime. And, and it's kind of crazy, especially on the heels of, of significant increases, hourly increases that we just provided. I hope like certain things, like even leaves, for example. I haven't seen much leaf removal and stuff like that going on during the day because they're probably tied up doing other things, but I hope those are the kind of things we're not going to keep showing out overtime for because that should be routine, normal to day work. I can see the above and the beyonds, like the encampment cleanouts or special events setups and breakdowns, but I mean, routine daily activities, cutting grass, that shouldn't be performed overtime. That should all be straight time work and, and on the heels of significant hourly raises to employees, I think this is something we're going to have to be mindful of. And I've seen managers in years past pretty much put a halt to all non-essential overtime, non-emergency overtime, to get a grip on what the overtime budgets start looking like because it could easily spiral out of control. Snow and ice is kind of a separate issue. I think we're going to get hit with that either way. There's nothing you can do. We're at the mercy of mother nature and, and we need coverage. I mean, that, that's something that we all agree on, but routine work that should be happening throughout the day, I don't see how we can justify paying time and a half rate for work that should be completed during straight time. Thank you.
Motion to accept and place on file by Council Leahy, seconded by Council Mercy. 6.2 communications, appointment of Deborah Belanger to historic board, motion to adopt by Council Leahy, seconded by Councilor Noon, roll call.
Mayor Chow, Council Drinkwater.
Yes.
Vice Chair Getchea.
Yes.
Council Janess.
Yes.
Council Leahy.
Yes.
Council Mercy.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Council Robinson.
Yes.
Council Rourke.
Yes.
Council Scott.
Yes.
Council Yem.
Yes.
Ten years.
Motion passes. 6.3 communication, resignation of Amy Watson from Library Board of Trustees, motion to accept by Council Rourke, seconded by Council Yem.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Council Mercy.
I'm not trying to rush this meeting by any means, but I see all the votes here and if we could bundle 7.1 to 7.8 and let any councillor that wants to speak on any of the votes, do so.
I second it.
Motion by Council Mercy to build 7.1 through 7.8, seconded by Councilor Noon. 7.1 vote, accept expend 199,000 local health support for COVID-19 grant. 7.2 vote, accept expend $2,885 FM global fire prevention grant. 7.3 vote, accept expend 500,000 mask call three grant. 7.4 vote, accept expend $60,000 FY24 municipal road safety grant, LPD. 7.5 vote, accept expend 97,000 tobacco control grant. 7.6 vote, establish opioid settlement stabilization fund. 7.7 vote, transfer 325,000 LPD. 7.8 vote, MRF vote FY2024.
Mr. Vice Chair, if I may, we'd just have to delete 7.8 from this joint roll call because 7.8 is just a, a referral to a public hearing that, that, that will be done in, on December 5th. So these are, this roll call will be for 7.1 through 7.7.
Thank you, Clerk Geary. So roll call 7.1 through 7.7, if there's no questions, roll call.
Do a motion.
Motion, motion by Councilor Noon, seconded by Council Robinson, roll call.
Mayor Chow, Council Drinkwater.
Yes.
Council Getchea.
Yes.
Council Janess.
Yes.
Council Leahy.
Yes.
Council Mercy.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Council Robinson.
Yes.
Council Rourke.
Yes.
Council Scott.
Yes.
Council Yem.
Yes.
Ten years.
7.8 vote, MRF vote FY2024, motion to refer to a public hearing by Council Drinkwater, seconded by Council Janess.
A public hearing beyond December 5th.
December 5th at 7:00 PM. Eight, move, move approval, I'm sorry, move approval by Council Leahy and seconded by Council Mercy. Eight orders from city manager, 8.1 order 60-day trial, waived full reading and second reading by title pursuant to chapter 266 of Code of Ordinances, City of Lowell, Massachusetts, concerning section 266-6, therefore entitled temporary experimental regulations. Temporary traffic regulations are hereby implemented for a period of up to 60 days. Motion to adopt by Council Scott, seconded by Council Rourke.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Mayor Chow, Council Drinkwater.
Yes.
Vice Chair Getchea.
Yes.
Council Janess.
Yes.
Council Leahy.
Yes.
Council Mercy.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Council Robinson.
Yes.
Council Rourke.
Yes.
Council Scott.
Yes.
Ten years.
Motion passes. Nine, ordinance from the city manager, 9.1 ordinance, amend chapter 227 by adding new Motion to Referral to Public Hearing on December 5th, 2023 at 7:00 PM by Counsel Robinson, seconded by Counsel Mercier. Ten Reports. Subcommittee, if any. 10.1 Special Events Subcommittee, November 2nd, 2023.
Counsel Robinson.
Counsel Robinson.
Can I give that report next meeting, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Eleven Petitions. 11.1 Claims. One Property Damage. Motion to Referral to Law Department for Report and Recommendation by Counsel Rourke, seconded by Counsel Yem. 11.2 Miscellaneous. Alvaro Govea requests removal of two no-parking signs in front of 7 Cotta Street. Motion to Referral to Transportation Engineer for Report and Recommendations by Counsel Janess, seconded by Counsel Drinkwater.
There's a person here on that petition.
Good night to everybody. I just want to tell the mayors that...
You just have to state your name.
I've owned this house for 27 years.
Please state your name and address.
My name's Alvaro Govea, and I'm the owner of 7 Cotta Street for 27 years, and never been a non-parking sign in the front of this building. And just recently, they did the sidewalk, and they put two parking signs there, and we have no parking.
Okay, thank you. Motion to Referral to Transportation Engineer for Report and Recommendation by Counselor Noon, seconded by Counsel Mercier. 11.3 Boston Gas DBA National Grid. Request Installation of 280-foot, 4-inch Plastic Main on Canal Street from Jackson Streets and Middlesex Street. Motion to Referral to Public Hearing on December 5th, 2023 at 7:00 PM by Counsel Robinson, seconded by Counsel Rourke. 11.4 National Grid. Request Installation of Underground Electrical Conduit on Morse Street to Improve Service to Lowell Housing Authority. Motion to Referral to Public Hearing on December 5th at 7:00 PM by Counsel Yem, seconded by Counsel Leahy. 11.5 National Grid. Request Installation of Underground Electrical Conduit on Doane Street to Improve Service to Lowell Housing Authority. Motion to Referral to a Public Hearing on December 5th at 7:00 PM by Counsel Mercier, seconded by Counsel Drinkwater. Twelve. Any announcements? Wow, I think that's the most hands I've ever saw, at the same time. Since you're the lady of the house and the queen, Counsel Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. In an effort to raise funds for the Friends of the Council on Aging, which all that money and proceeds go back into the Senior Center, we're having a raffle of donated prizes at our Christmas dance to be held December 15th. There are books of raffle tickets, 12 raffle tickets. They're a dollar each, but 12 for $10. They must be returned to the Senior Center by December 1st, and the drawing is December 15th. So anybody interested to help out the Senior Center, and if you have a check, it's payable to the FOC, Friends of the Council on Aging, FCOA, if you're Friends of the Council on Aging. Thank you.
Counsel Leahy?
Thank you. Through you to the manager, residents on Mansa Street, in particular, Mr. Cliff Krieger, wanted to say how pleased they were. They had a large tree fall this morning. It was cleaned up, police, fire, DPW, and it was cleaned up within a matter of hours. So they're very grateful, and he wanted me to mention it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Leahy. Counsel Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. On behalf of the entire council, we want to wish a belated happy birthday to Counselor Dan Rourke. May all your wishes come true. Thank you.
Motion to Adjourn by Counsel Janess, seconded by Counsel Drinkwater. Thank you.